Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the August 23rd City of Muskegon Commission Meeting. And we'll start off if Pastor Marcy Miller can approach and lead us in prayer, please.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the rest and recreation of this season, especially for the beauty of our city. We, as we turn towards fall, we remember families and children that get ready for school, and we ask your blessing upon them. We pray for all those gathered here to do the work of the city this evening, and we ask that it be done with goodness and with justice, and that you would bless those gathered here. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Turquess?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Gowron, absent. Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rinsima-Sipiga?
Here.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk's summary request to approve minutes of the August 8th, 2016 work session meeting and the August 9th, 2016 regular City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Designation of voting delegates for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Business Meeting, City Clerk's summary request, to designate by action of the Commission Mayor Stephen J. Gowron, who will be in attendance at the convention as an official representative to cast the vote of the municipality at the annual meeting, and to designate City Manager Frank Peterson to serve as alternate. Staff recommendation, approval. Certification of MERS representatives, finance, summary request. The MERS Plan document provides that the governing body for each municipality shall certify the names of two delegates to the annual meeting. One delegate shall be a member who is an officer of the municipality appointed by the governing body of the municipality elected by the member, officer, employees of the municipality. The City Employees Unit previously agreed to a rotating basis based on date of joining MERS to select one official employee representative. This year, the official employee representative attending the MERS conference will be Peter Hughes, firefighter from the Firefighters Union Group. It is recommended that Elizabeth Lewis, Assistant Finance Director, be designated as the city's employer delegate. Staff recommendation, certification of Elizabeth Lewis and Peter Hughes to be the city's officer and employee delegates at the MERS Annual Meeting in Acme on September 28th and 29th of 2016. Police detective vehicles, DPW equipment, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase two Chevy Impalas from the Berger Chevrolet, the MI deal state contract holder. These will replace the two oldest vehicles currently being used. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase two Chevy Impalas from Berger Chevrolet. Trust Fund Grant Application for Pier Marquette Park Engineering, summary request. Adopt the Resolution Committee in the city for the local match on the trust fund grant application for improvements at Pier Marquette Park. Staff recommendation, adopt the resolution. Beach cleaner, DPW equipment, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase one new surf rake from H Harbor and Sons Incorporated for $53,750 and trade in the current surf rake for a trade-in value of $9,000. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase one new surf rake. Youth Basketball League and Open Gym Proposal, Muskegon Public Schools Planning Economic Development, summary request. The City of Muskegon has contracted with Muskegon Public Schools for the management of the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym since 2010. The program has been successful, and the schools would like to manage the program for the 2016-2017 school year. The Commission is requested to approve the proposal and authorize staff to enter into an agreement with the schools for oversight of the basketball program and the open gym program. Staff recommendation, to approve the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym Proposal and authorize staff to enter into a formal agreement with the schools. Request to create a new Neighborhood Enterprise Zone District at 285 West Western Avenue. Item has been removed per stat, City Manager.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items that you wish to have removed before further discussion? Commissioner German?
Yes, item B as in Ball and item D as in David.
It has...
Is that B and D you said?
Yes.
I'd like to remove item E.
Commissioner... Oh, Commissioner Johnson?
Seeing others, I move to approve the consent agenda as read minus items B, D, and E.
Second? It has been moved and second to accept the consent agenda as presented minus items B, D, and E. Commissioner...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsima-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Commissioner German?
Okay. Yes, I move to designate by action of the Commission Mayor Stephen Gowron, Stephen J. Gowron, who will be in attendance to the convention as an official representative to cast the vote to the municipality at the annual meeting and designate City Clerk and Mish.
As serve as an alternate. Support? Okay, it has been moved and supported for designation of voting delegates for Michigan Municipal League Annual Business Meeting. Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. Just like to get some more clarity on what all this is going to entail, and I think we'll just kind of touch on this also first.
Yeah, and I asked Commissioner to pull that off because I will not be in attendance, so I just wanted to make sure that we don't make me the alternate. We'll have Anne stand in my place as the alternate, but this is really just the annual MML convention. I don't know that we've very regularly sent folks here outside of the City Clerk, but the mayor is going to be there. He's been getting a little more active in MML. They've asked him to speak at a couple of different things throughout last year, and so he'll be attending his first MML conference and representing the city at the event. That's real, yeah?
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsima-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Commissioner German?
Okay, item D. Okay, I move to authorize staff to purchase two Chevy Impalas from Berger Chevrolet.
Support? Has been moved and supported. Commissioner German?
Okay, I'd like to get a price on what these vehicles is going to cost. If someone could speak on behalf of that. Okay. And these are, are these going to be specialized vehicle other than the police cruisers because they said for detectives?
Yes, they'll be unmarked.
Okay.
First, the vehicles is $23,369.06 each.
Okay, and these are going to be modified vehicles already, or is this going to be something that the DPW will do, or?
The DPW will put lights on them and lights only.
Okay. And when you say unmarked, no decals or anything like that?
No, sir.
So, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if it's unmarked and you're putting lights on it, does that mean it's going to be slick top with the lights underneath it, or the lights are going to be on top of it still even though it's unmarked?
It will be a slick top.
Okay.
The lights will be inside. There'll be two small lights facing forward, two small lights facing the rear of the vehicle so that if they are on site someplace, they can light those up to be identified as officers.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. This was a budgeted item, but when we talked about this and when we set the budget, I asked explicitly if the money going to buy new cruisers was going to be going to slick tops or going to go to marked vehicles, and at the time, we were informed that there would be no purchasing of slick top unmarked vehicles this year.
There were two separate items that went through that we will also be purchasing cruisers. This is a totally separate item that went through Commission for Detective Vehicles for fleet replacement. They've spanned out their lifetime of 10 years of service.
If I could, Commissioner Johnson, these aren't police vehicles in the normal sense. They're the vehicles that the detectives drives to crime scenes and to do their investigations. They're not patrol vehicles.
So they will not be making house calls?
I don't know if she wants it.
These vehicles are administrative type vehicles. They're used by plainclothes detectives or administrators, and we conduct police business, and they are of different colors, black, white, blue, brown, et cetera. And they do have lights in them because we do go to scenes like we have several times this summer, and those vehicles are lit up so people know where the police, but they are not uniform officers that operate these, okay? Then you have your marked cars, and marked cars come in two different formats. One is like we call slick tops, or they don't have that overhead on top, and then other ones, they put the overheads on them. Currently, out of the 21 vehicles, we have two that do not have overheads on the top. That's it, out of the 21 foot cars we have. But they all come slick top except we install overheads on them.
Okay.
Does that help you understand, I mean, the difference?
Well, yeah, I understand the difference. I just was, it was a little disconcerting having heard earlier this year that there were going to be no purchasing of slick tops. There were all going to be marked vehicles with lights on top, so now hearing that this is for detectives, and I understand for detectives, you want to do stakeouts, you want to do undercover operations, you don't want to have marked vehicles. That makes sense.
Yeah, we don't do traffic stops with these at all.
Absolutely. But I just know that receiving feedback from the community earlier this year, they prefer all their police vehicles to be marked, to be clearly identifiable, so that in a case of emergency, they can be sought out in their neighborhood and also just general reassurances patrolling the neighborhood. But then I just heard a concern today about unmarked vehicles actually making a house call looking for somebody, and all she could see was the vehicle on her street. She was upstairs, she couldn't see who was at the door, but they were pounding, had been pounding on the door, and so she didn't come running to the door. She didn't know who it was, and she saw the vehicle outside. It was unmarked, turned out it to be detectives. So I'm just wondering, is that common practice, that detectives will be making house calls like that?
Absolutely. Detectives go out and do their investigations. They're dressed in our, what we call our, like our business attire for the Detective Bureau. They all have identification, all police officers have identification. So if somebody's concerned about that, they would ask for identification, and even if they're not completely clear, they can always call 911 and ask if the police are there, and then, you know, we know our cars are there, and then they could work that out in such a manner. But yes, business attire, police officers frequently are on the committee investigating, you know, cases after the call has come in.
Okay, thank you. I, while did have a little concern about what I'd heard previously versus now, I understand the need for these. This is a replacement of two of our oldest vehicles in the fleet, so I'm not going to oppose this. I will support this purchase. I just wanted that clarification.
Right. And then the other purchase will be done later this year, the, what they call the police cars. You know, those police cars that come in will be fully marked. They will meet every criteria of the Motor Vehicle Code, the 360 lighting, they'll have the reflective tape on all the sides like we have now. And like I said, we currently have two that we use for traffic and other things, but the vast majority of the fleet, the 19 vehicles stay marked with that overhead on top unless we were to actually replace that particular slick top, but there's no plans of making any more so-called slick tops.
To keep the ratio as it is.
Yeah, we'll keep the 19 to the 2.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help, Obama?
Excuse me, Chief. One more question.
Yes.
What's the, what's the, do you go by mileage?
Well, generally, there's a mileage criteria for the police cars, which is generally approximately, what is it now, 54 months and over 100,000 miles?
115.
Yeah, 115,000 miles in 54 months. That's for the police cars that go on patrol, and the unmarked vehicles, we have kind of a loose criteria on that. It's eight years, but there's some much older than that. It's by financing and things, but some of the cars that we're still using are much older than the eight years old because we're trying to be fiscally responsible. But we have a lot of vehicles that are way up over 100,000 miles, and as you know, as vehicles get older, they start costing much more in maintenance. We just lost a transmission in a vehicle, which now costs several thousand to replace those. So it's best that when the vehicle becomes towards the end of its life to actually buy the new and then sell the older vehicle, but we're not increasing the numbers once again either. It's the same number.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Anything else, Commissioner?
Excuse me, just one other question. You said, when you said sell the vehicles, that just to the public or whoever auctioned those vehicles off?
Yeah, DPW can explain their process in auctioning off of vehicles or selling them to the public, but it's all done either through a website or...
For an auction company.
Okay, and that's made known to the public as well?
Yes, yes.
Advertised locally in two different papers. It gets added to the City of Muskegon website, also the link actually to the auction.
Okay.
Mr. Muhammad?
Yes, sir. You know, the vehicles, they go to auction. The Commissioners are not allowed to bid on them, by the way. But I just want to apologize to Mr. Johnson. I am the one who stood right before you here at the budget time and said no slick tops, and that was a reference to the cruisers, not to the, you know, the detective cars. So if I misled you in any which way, shape or form, my sincerest apology, and it's all me.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsima-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Commissioner Turquess? Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution committing the city for the local match on the trust fund grant application for improvements at Pier Marquette Park.
Support? It has been moved and supported for trust fund grant applications for Pier Marquette Park. Roll call?
Discussion.
We want to talk about it.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Go ahead, discussion.
Well, I noticed I'm all in favor of anything that we can do at Pier Marquette. This comes from the Engineering Department, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Al Chetel what improvements are in this broad scope or what do you have in mind to do?
Few things were submitted as part of the grant application. This is a grant application that we applied for earlier this year when we came before you the first time. It's just that DNR is asking us for a more detail and commitment to the funds that we have in the budget right now. We're talking about increasing the size or enhancing the size of the building itself and do some improvements to the bathrooms, and the playground is the main part of it.
Enhancing the size of the bathhouse?
The bathhouse. We possibly talking about possibility of adding a unisex kind of bathroom that will help carry the load, if you will, but the playground is the major part of the project, and possibly increasing or lengthening the ADA ramp down there as well.
And the total, let's hear some of the total funds between the grant and what we're giving will be how much?
About $350,000, sometimes.
$350,000.
Sometimes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, Commissioners? Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsima-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Down to new business?
Concurrent for the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish Public Safety, 1133 West Western Avenue. Summary request, this is to request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structure is unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that it be demolished within 30 days or infraction tickets may be issued. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder, or staff may issue infraction tickets to the owner, agent, or responsible party if they do not demolish the structure. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Is there anyone to speak to this? Come forward to the podium, please. Mr. Kirksey?
Yes.
Hold your comments for three minutes, sir.
I will.
And could you give your name and address, please?
Dennis Kirksey, Kirksey Investment Corp. I'm actually Vice President of Kirksey Investment Corp., not the owner of the property as it's been stated in multiple locations, but my address is 1856 Cedar Avenue, North Muskegon, First off, I'll thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I did the same thing before your Housing Board of Appeals. We do concur with most of what you've got written there. It is a nuisance, it is a substandard structure. We've been looking since the time had the fire and the end of 99. We've been looking for an alternate use for it, hasn't developed, so we have been actively meeting with the city since May in what we are going to do and as far as demolition of the structure and how that was going to happen. We do have a demolition permit that has been issued by the City of Muskegon, giving us a six-month window to complete the demolition. So my request in front of you here is postponement, if you will, on this concurring with HBA. I don't know if that's the process or the right term, but we have a meeting with city staff and DEQ staff that's set up for this Friday afternoon to talk about environmental issues in that whole area. As I know you guys are aware, we're part of the Shaw Walker Plume, as it's noted on the city's website, and because of groundwater contamination, what is done and how it is done is extremely important. My Environmental Council wasn't able to make this meeting tonight, but I know he has been actively meeting. He's had a letter that was directed to the City Manager, and I had a letter previously that was directed to Safe Built and trying to make everybody planning, make everybody aware of the situation. So what we're looking for at this time is just not so much a little less window for the demolition cycle, we're looking for just, I don't want to see city staff spend their time and effort going out seeking bids when we already have a contractor that's secured to do the demolition of the site. The only thing that's in question is whether the basement slab and foundations remain in place or whether they have to come out, and our Environmental Council is advising me strongly that whoever takes the basement slab out becomes liable for whatever might or might not be under it. So at this time, we just think it requires further conversation with DEQ, and for that reason, I ask that you just kind of table this, if you will, for 30 days. HBA's already made the recommendation. We concur with that, it needs to come down. The only question is how much of it?
City manager would like to speak on this?
Yeah, sure, and I think Jeff might have a couple of things to say, but I think you'll hear from staff as our recommendation is that we move forward with the process and encourage the owners to take superintending control if they need more time to work more things out, but from our standpoint, we want to see the process move forward, and much like we had on Clay, if you remember on Clay, we kind of did the same thing, and we gave them more time, and ended up taking two years before it really ended up coming down. What we want to do is make sure that we're in control of the timeline here, and we'll be happy to work with Mr. Kirksey on whether or not the basement stays or goes and things like that, but we do want to continue with the timeline to keep that kind of integrity of the dangerous building process moving forward, especially considering the public interest that's been dedicated, you know, and pushed on, western, floor west western over the last, you know, three months. We don't want to push this out any longer than we already have.
Commissioner Turquess?
Ms. Princeton, so you're saying, I think the motion includes that demolition begins within 30 days of tonight if this is passed, and that's what you want to continue doing?
Correct, we want to continue down the path, but the property owners do have the opportunity for superintending control, and then we do have a little bit of flexibility as far as city manager's approval or disapproval of the foundations that there, that really is the point, only point of contention right now is whether it'll stay or go, and kind of like you pointed out, we're going to be meeting about those later this week, and we probably have a little more understanding of what our requirements are going to be and what our expectations will be if they stay or if they go at that point.
So you asked for a 30-day postponement, and then that would add another 30 days from the new date, so that's 60 days that you're talking about. I'm on the HBA, and hope was there, and I'm not sure when I heard your plans to demolish the building to the basement. I didn't quite understand that, but...
Make a little more sense now?
No.
No? Okay.
I'd like to see it go, but with the basement, there's going to be an elevation?
No, basement floor slab, which is 10 foot below ground. There's 10 foot ceiling height in that basement. We're asking to leave the basement floor slab and the foundation wall no closer than three foot to the existing grade.
Wouldn't that present a safety issue with an open basement?
No, we're filling everything in brass, and when it's done, it's all brass.
Okay.
No, the only reason is for environmental protection to leave the concrete in place, and, I'm sorry, two reasons. Environmental is the one, with the foundation perimeter wall, it's, the building is built to the property lines on three of the four sides, and if we are forced to take all of that out down below the footings, we're going to lose Coles Truck Lane, Consumer Substation, and Western Avenue, and that's part of what I think we're going to be meeting on later this week, too. And I know Coles did put a call out, they had a conversation with Kathy this morning, they have concerns if the building foundation is maybe come out of there because they know that it's going to shove out. And that's really not a real option, so...
The building has been used, to me, I don't know the history of it, but it's been there as long as I've lived here, 15 years, it's been that way, and it looks like a shipping and receiving destination, but you have some fear that there might be some chemicals or something in...
We have knowledge of groundwater contamination on that site, Coles site, West Rand site, Shaw, it's the Shaw Walker Plume, and that's all posted publicly on the city's website as well.
If I may, I'll just update the Commission on my conversations. I did actually, I did talk with Cynthia Havard at Coles this morning, and she was not clear whether or not this would really hinder the roadway, but there is what was a former alley that went behind this property, which is now, it was vacated, and now Coles owns half and Kirksey owns half, and Coles has an easement on the Kirksey side to bring their trucks in, so they do need to be able to use that road. However, I contacted Mohammed right after that conversation. He actually went down, took a look. We pulled out some of the old aerials from the 70s to take a look at it, and are, at this point, I think there are some things that would be pretty easily solved, which may entail taking everything out, but could well entail leaving the wall in just the 10 feet, which again, you wouldn't see from the top, but to shore up that roadway, but you could take the rest out. But we are going to be in on the conversation with Heather Hopkins and some others at the DEQ this Friday, as Dennis indicated, and we'll see what she's saying, but I don't think it's anything that should hold up the decision tonight because I think after Friday, we're going to know, and we're all going to be on the, well, at least the DEQ and the city will be on the same page. So we certainly would like to see this move forward. We think we've got plenty of time to, it's not, it's not a deal stopper, one way or the other, we'll do what needs to be done, but I think we'll have that decision by the end of the week.
Just, if I could just clarify, the, it wasn't the vacated, the city's vacated alley that we share? We owned the site that Coles expanded onto, and when we sold that site to them, we mutually drew a new, a new alleyway. It's a private driveway for them and for us, and we have mutual easement on both sides of that. We can use theirs, they can use ours, but their trucks are very tight, at their gate and at their, be their southwest corner.
I will just assure the Commission that staff will make sure we're not having Coles I will just assure the commission that staff will make sure we're not having Coles trucks fall off the road or the road fall apart. So between Mohammed and again, the DEQ and others, we will make sure that it's done correctly.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that assurance. We certainly don't want any disruption to our, our businesses, particularly Coles. Mr. Kirksey, you indicated that there's a six-month demolition permit that has been pulled already?
Yes.
If, if all your ducts were in a row, worked through environmental, you worked through the city, you're meeting with the city this Friday, everything was worked out, how quickly would you expect it to be torn down and then cleaned up there?
Our demo contractor was waiting to start until the answer for the concrete. He wanted that first and because it has a bearing on how he approaches this and he was waiting on utilities to be capped. Utilities were capped last week. DT, he was out and they capped those, so it's, it's now able to demolish from that end. He's got some other work that is, is committing him in the beginning of September. He's able, I talked to him this afternoon about it. He said he's able to get out there and probably get about a weekend before he's got to do a couple of other projects that are small and then they can be back on it. So the six-month window on the permit is, I saw that with winter, it was going to be necessary to get it done. Obviously, we won't have it seeded until after the thaw in the spring, but we saw this progressing, tearing down about a third of it, filling about a third, tear down a third, fill a third, and work your way right on across the footprint of the building.
And you're wanting or asking for extra time?
Not on the demo.
Not, not to demo it, but to, to table or delay concurrents with the HBA. I mean, did you have a, I heard Commissioner Turckus mentioned 30 days. Is that what you're, I didn't, I don't recall hearing that from you, so I was just wondering. Maybe you heard that at the HBA.
Well, HBA, and I think on this notice, I, I think, the way I understand what is being looked at is HBA would be soliciting contractors right away and starting demo within 30 days. We have a, we have a building here, excuse me, a demolition permit that gives us a six-month window, so I don't understand how those two work together. That's, again, that's for us to figure out.
Yeah. And Craig, if counsel could, could clarify. So if we move forward with concurrence with this, with HBA, he has 21 days or the, the property has 21 days to seek superintendent control?
Correct.
Through the courts? And they would have to put up how much for a surety bond? It's a percentage of the overall deconstruction cost?
Yes. We would, I, we would need to have conversation with Mr. Lewis and Safe Built as to what that amount should be in this case.
So demolition could begin within 30 days, but, I mean, we put a lot of houses on this list and they don't get demolished because it's, as funds are available, correct?
Yeah, that, yeah.
I mean, it's not a guarantee that, it's, this is not really a timetable to say to Mr. Kirksey, we're going to, you know, we're going to solicit bids and, and 30 days from today, August 23rd, we're going to do this.
I, I would say this is a higher priority for us, but to think that we would be in a position to tear down in 30 days would be, I mean, that would be pushing it. The bids would have to come back to, to you folks here. You guys would have to make it, you know, make an informed decision to tear, you know, to actually complete the demo if he doesn't take superintendent control. But I would be very surprised if we were able to get that all accomplished in, in 30 days.
So I guess my point is, is that if we pass this and we concur, it simply gives us the position to be in that we can go down that road, but it's not saying we have to. And if he would continue down his path, it could, it could not come to us, you know, demolishing it with our solicited bids.
Correct. We don't want to demolish it. We would prefer that they demolish it and they carry the cost for the demolition. So ultimately, if we feel like we're moving in the right direction, that's the direction that we, that we would push it in. But we do want to be in a position to demolish it, you know, if and when it becomes apparent that we, that we do need to, to actually pull the trigger on demolition.
Sure.
That's all we're looking for.
Thank you. May I add one thing here very quickly to help out? What the superintendent control does is, is he has 21 days to make an agreement basically with our attorney on what we're talking about right now. The difference is an escrow amount would be placed, you know, off an escrow just to assure that he meets the timelines that has been agreed on with Mr. Schreier and him. And why this is important is because this happened back in 2001. The HBA was willing to work with the owner on exterior repairs and nothing occurred. Then he hired presses back in about 2006, which you have presses again. And presses was hired back then for, for demolition and a permit was obtained in March 20th, 2006 to demolish and remove the structure and debris. Permit was closed in 2013, which was seven years. It never got done. Now we're back here in 2016 after significant complaints to the community, social media, so on and so forth. If the commission decides tonight to give him more time, there's no, we cannot hold him any timeline. If the commission moves forward towards superintendent control, he has 21 days to get with Mr. Schreier and come up with an agreement and then have a cash escrow to assure that he will follow that timeline. If he doesn't this time, then we have actual cash escrow to go ahead ourselves instead of our money. And if I've misspoken on that, Mr. Schreier, please help me. That's the lay, I guess, explanation why it's important, what the commission does tonight. I would like to clarify or at least speak to the notes you've got, Chief. Presses did complete the demolition that they read the permit for. It was a partial demolition because at that time in 2006, it's been over $100,000 on architectural to go up with the building, not tear it down. So it was a partial demolition. They leveled it at the second floor and our intent and purposes and the city would have drawings at that time that were submitted because we had architectural drawings to put the building back up. And so the demo that, that they were contracted for, that the permit was issued for was completed in 2006. And then, well, the economy went to the hole and we couldn't put anybody in there or finance it. So it, it isn't like they, I don't want it to reflect on the record that presses came up short on what they said they were going to do because they did exactly what they said they were going to do and we did exactly what we said we were going to do. And from that point on, it just kind of sat. And so I, I do, I do concur with all the frustration and if you are going to approve HBA's recommendation and move forward, I do like the conversation that Commissioner Stigman had with the, it doesn't mean you have to act on it. It doesn't mean you have to start the wheels turning because I don't know how, I've got a six-month window to demolish and I don't know how you can have another contractor move in on that. We, we need the opportunity to, to, to do the demolition and like I say, we've, we requested an answer on what level that demolition is. So I'm hoping Friday resolves that so that we start it.
Commissioner Stigman. I think, yeah, I think the more good faith we have that it's going to be demolished. I mean, clearly we've gotten a lot of public opinion about it, so we're getting pressure and staff is getting pressure. So, I mean, what we're going to do or not do is probably a lot dictated by that. I mean, if, if, if it goes along, we'll probably be less inclined to force it, but I think we want that option, so.
Commissioner Johnson. Yeah, if I heard you, thank you, Vice Mayor. If I heard you correcting, Mr. Kirksey, you did say you had some concerns about environmental issues, correct? And you're in negotiations with, talking with the DEQ? Now, whoever takes on that project, if there is some type of contamination to water, whatever, they take on the responsibility of the liability of demolition on that project?
I'll summarize it briefly. What my environmental counsel has told me, and it's been through this process, is that there have been a couple of legal cases recently where developers unknowingly, they went, they just demolished a structure similar to this, an industrial structure, they demolished it. Didn't know what was there, didn't know what was, they were going to find or anything else, but when they demolished it, suddenly things that were contained under concrete structure now are open to the weather, open to movement and migration, and they were held liable for the exacerbation of an environmental problem. They didn't create the problem, but they caused it to migrate, which in turn, they bore the liability. And like I say, that's what my, my counsel has strongly suggested to me, since we were not the operator of this facility through all of its life of industrial, heavy industrial history, we don't know what's there. There are things we do know that are, like I say, matter of public record for groundwater, but we don't know if there is anything under it and it's a, it's a crap shoot to find out whether there is or isn't. And right now it's, I guess I'd say it's somebody else's crap shoot other than mine because if the city contracts for it, it's my understanding, if the city contracts for it, goes out for it, exacerbates a problem, they do potentially open themselves up for liability on it. That's why my, my counsel's suggesting strongly that it remain.
Yeah. And that, excuse me, but that was my concern. If we concur with this and move forward and there is some type of contaminant, contamination, the city takes on the responsibility of that liability. Have we done enough, I guess, research or testing, spoken with DEQ or tested that soil to say, hey, we can go ahead and move forward, you know, with this? I mean, do we know for a fact? That, that's basically what I'm saying. Do we know for a fact, Kathy?
I don't know when it comes to environmental issues, if you ever know everything for a fact, but there actually was quite a bit of environmental done on this property in the past. The DEQ has that. We know there were drums in the, the basement and those have been removed. When I called Heather Hopkins and city manager was part of one of those conversations at, at DEQ, she actually had someone go through all the old files on this property and pull them out and we've been looking at this for the last few weeks. And so they know quite a bit about the property. Their advice at that moment, and again, well, I think we'll have it figured out this Friday, but was they would prefer to actually take up the foundations because if there is some contamination under, they would see this, the soil staining of that if you take the foundations up. If you leave the foundations there, which could have contamination on them right now, which could cause even more problems, it might be better to get that foundation out. That may be the better route to go and they may even have some services where they could come in and help identify some of that after the fact. So the good thing here, why I, I can't tell you 100% everything that's going on there, but I can tell you, we're all talking together and that's what we need to be doing. The DEQ is aware of it. They've got their opinions. We're involved, the attorney's involved from, from Kirksey's end. I don't know if John has anything, our city attorney has anything he wants to add, but we're doing what we need to, I mean, we, I can assure you, we're doing what we need to be doing to make sure that does not happen.
One other question. Thank you. That's my main concern is the possibility of some type of contaminants. I would actually feel more comfortable probably hearing from someone in the DEQ to make a decision on concurring with this. You know, depending on how the commission feels also, I think we need to really think about, you know, moving forward on this, but try to make a sound, independent judgment because we don't want that repercussion coming back on the city if something does happen.
If I could, if I could just add to while Mohammed comes up. And we want to make sure that, that we, we recognize these for what they are. We're, we're agreeing, we're asking you to agree to move it through the process, not to approve a demolition contract?
Okay.
Not to approve the scope of a contract, not any of that, any of that stuff. So at the time that, that if and when we do have to tear it down and it becomes a city project, we will have answers to a lot of these questions before we get there and we'll understand the scope of what our, our portion of the project is, whether that is taking out the foundation, leaving the foundation in. All those things will come after, you know, if we get to that point.
Right.
But the goal here is that, is that Kirksey Investment Corp. does a demolition. That's obviously what we want to do, but we just want to make sure that we have the process in place to do the demolition if and when we need to do the demolition.
That's, I guess I'm sitting back there and I know my, I'm supposed to keep my mouth shut here once in a while and I have a hard time these days with it. And I think that's the point that I was trying to make is the decision that you make right now has no impact or is not affected by whatever environmental issues we discuss on Friday because I didn't want the two to be tied together. Your decision right now, I mean, the removal of the subsurface structure is strictly a, a city manager kind of decision, if you will, based on whatever conditions or circumstances that we find, which would come in at that time after our conversation with the DEQ and the environmental consultant on Friday. But your decision right now, whether to concur with the Housing Board of Appeal or not, has no impact on the discussion or the discussion on Friday has no impact on your decision right now or the proposal before you.
Commissioner Johnson.
If I may ask Mr. Kirksey a question. So are you more concerned with the prospect of us moving forward and concurring with HBA, triggering that potential 30-days demo, that it overlaps and maybe complicates your own demolition and environmental due care? Is that your primary concern, less than, than actually going through the process of getting superintendent control and putting up the surety bond?
I don't know. Yeah, I guess you're, you've hit it right. I, my concern is I don't know how we could do both. I don't know how the city could award a contract for demo while we have a contractor in place that hasn't exceeded his six-month time window. So that's my concern. I mean, and underlying with that, that we make sure we're doing it right. I, I can't do something that my legal counsel is telling me, do not do that.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate that.
Very seldom do they come across that clear at this time. Coming across pretty, pretty solid on it.
Uh huh. Okay. Thank you. And I, and I understand that, that concern, the overlap, and also wanted to make sure you, you have appropriate environmental due care?
Right.
In, in demoing it. And it sounds like that the superintendent control process itself and the surety bond isn't too onerous and wouldn't, that you'd be going through that process so that you could demo it. We, we all want it demoed, the community wants it demoed, we'd prefer not to pay for it. So we'd much rather have you demo it or at least have the surety bond on, on hand in the event that we have to demo it. I'm a little concerned about the environmental liabilities. Let me run a scenario by the, our attorney. The good counsel can give some insights or inputs. Let's say we move forward with the HBA concurrence, concurring with HBA decision today. 21 days goes by, he had, Kirksey property has not done the superintendent control, they've not put up the surety bond. Now it's on the city to demo it. 30 days goes by, we can pull the trigger if we have the resources and a contract in place, we not obligated to. Where do we go from there? Like, two things. When would we ever become obligated to deal with that property? And secondly, if we did move forward with tear down that property and didn't take appropriate due care environmentally and caused exacerbation or disturbance of, of the contaminants and made it worse, would the city likely have a viability?
Well, let me deal with the first question first. If they don't file suit for this seeking superintendent control and if at some point staff decided were, they are unhappy with progress, staff can pull the trigger and say, okay, we're going to award the contracts to undertake the demolition. That can be done relatively quickly. Normally our contracts and Mo, it's going to have to help me, but normally our contracts on this type of demolition would also include that the contractor is responsible for compliance with all environmental statutes, et cetera, et cetera. And so we would look back to them to make sure they don't exacerbate the situation. We certainly also would set it up in a format that we have a comfort level that it will not be exacerbated. And that's part of what's occurring, I think, Friday with the conference, conference call with DEQ to assure, to get an understanding for everybody as to what the risks and potential risks are.
Okay. So we'd be essentially shifting that potential liability or risk onto the contractor?
Yep.
For the demolition and presumably the contractor would have some kind of insurance as well?
Correct.
To cover issues like that?
And history of dealing with similar properties.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Given that it's, it's a matter of coordinating, it sounds like the biggest concern, coordinating, make sure there's not a disruption of our part on your part, doing the, the due diligence and environmental care and that the superintendent control process isn't too onerous for you. I guess that was kind of my, my concern is if, if you're going to do it anyhow, why make you go through that hole, through those hoops? But it sounds like we just need go through that hole, through those hoops? But it sounds like we just need continued coordination and assurances from staff that we're not going to be starting the demolition process on the 30-day mark, that we're going to make sure that we're working closely with Kirksey on having a plan in place that they will implement for tear down. I mean, that's basically what it sounds like is happening now, that there's coordination, that coordination's going to continue, be hand in hand, and we are not going to be jumping the gun on demolition. That we're going to do everything we possibly can to make sure it's done properly and at the control of Kirksey.
Yeah, and this isn't like a $5,000 tear down, so probably I wouldn't award a six-figure contract without coming back to you guys and making sure we're all on the same page. So, I would expect that if we are going to tear it down, you guys, this group, this commission will have the ultimate approval of the contract. So, it'll definitely, if it looks like we're moving faster than you want us to move, you'll have the opportunity to address it when we put it on the agenda for your approval.
Commissioner Warren.
And at that point, we would also have an opportunity to hear an update of how the, all the other processes in the DEQ, and I mean, we could hear an update at that point as well. Correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Warren.
Are we looking for a motion?
I think we have.
There is no motion yet. Oh, you caused the hearing and then threw the motion?
No, there's no public hearing, but there was no motion ever.
There was no motion on the court, yes.
I move to concur with the Housing Board of Appeal's decision to demolish 1133 West Western Avenue.
Support it.
Motion has been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
No discussion. After hearing all the details, and I think, you know, me myself, actually being part of the HBA before, you know, my main focus is trying to get a understanding from the department heads, public safety, and the citizen business owner themselves. So, I think that I have a pretty clear understanding of how the process will work. And, you know, I think we can go ahead and move forward on this, and I concur with the decision to proceed to demolish and have Mr. Kirksey follow up and do what he needs to do and test the bat. So, that's just my take on it.
Anything further? Roll call.
Commissioner Germanz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rintz-Masipika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Police Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Request to add parcels to the city's existing groundwater ordinance.
Summary request, the city has received an application to designate 52 parcels under the water supplies ordinance. These parcels are associated with the formal Mobile Oil Pipeline, Sisson Avenue at McCracken Street. The ordinance prohibits the use of groundwater wells and secondary water supplies under certain circumstances and in certain locations to prevent exposure to contaminated groundwater, as well as to prevent wells from influencing the movement of contaminated water. Notice was sent to the affected addresses prior to this meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the ordinance amendment to add the additional 52 parcels.
Mike Francis?
Good evening. Just a little background on this. In 1971, there was a reported release of gasoline through this pipeline. There was a major cleanup, approximately 26,500 gallons of free product were recovered from the site. No additional free product was detected since 1995. However, there are low levels of contamination reported in the area, and given these low-level concentrations and the plume, remediation is not warranted, because the concentrations can be adequately addressed through the groundwater ordinance. So, we received this application from ExxonMobil. We've been working closely with Nancy Johnson from the DEQ, who is here, with any technical questions you may have. A notice was sent out to these 52 parcels on July 15th, and we're here today to amend the ordinance to add these parcels.
Thank you, Frank. Any discussion?
Now, this ordinance would exactly do what, Frank?
It'll add the 52 parcels to the ordinance, and that restricts the groundwater usage and restrict any wells that would be able to go in there.
Okay.
Any kind of responses from your letter?
I did not personally. I believe there may be one person. Is anybody here to speak on this? You heard that maybe somebody was here, but it appears that they may not be. I've not directly gotten any calls from anybody.
Commissioner Warren.
So, do you know, will this affect our citizens that already have, if they already have wells, they need to take them out?
That, I believe Nancy, is the case. They're not supposed to be able to use them. They would have to be capped. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And we don't know at this point how many citizens that might affect. Like, how many would have to cap that?
I'll let Nancy into that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Johnson. I'm the district enforcement coordinator for the DEQ. And as far as, first of all, I'll go back to contact. I was, again, contacted by one individual who does have an irrigation well in this area. And I explained to him in terms of adoption of the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written right now, it's your ordinance, the way the ordinance is written is there is no irrigation wells allowed in the restricted zone, or the proposed restricted zone. And so, I said for him specifically that that well would have to be abandoned. He's the only one I heard about, heard from. We require the applicant, in this case ExxonMobil, to go through multiple lines of evidence, which is checking for well, checking well records, checking municipal water supply records, and then also doing a mailer to each of the residences, asking about presence of wells, and then following that up with a door-to-door for the non-respondents. And that has all been completed. This one, for some reason, fell through the cracks. It was not identified until they called me and indicated that they had an irrigation well, but that well would have to be abandoned, unless ordinance was amending.
Commissioner Sidney.
So, who has to pay for abandoning the well?
ExxonMobil will be paying for the abandonment of the well, but the enforcement comes through the city in order to do that, in order for that to occur.
Commissioner Warren.
Can you just give a brief explanation or summary of the environmental damages, why this is, why we want to cap the wells and not use the groundwater anymore, just a brief?
Yeah, as was indicated by Mike, this happened back in the 70s. There's just some residual groundwater contamination that exists out there. And under our cleanup statutes, liable parties are allowed to close out the contamination sites through institutional controls, and your ordinance is one of those institutional controls that's on the books. And they've chosen to pursue that route for closure. And what that basically says is that, you know, we have contamination in this area, and we're going to restrict exposure through, basically by saying no wells are allowed. That's the way, again, they're looking for closure for this site.
I have another follow-up question. So, at this point, was the resident concerned about what the health damages might be because they've been using that contaminated water source?
No, their concern was that they had just invested money into putting the well in, and were upset about having to have to have the well abandoned.
ExxonMobil will pay to cap it or close that well, but they're not going to reimburse them for the cost of the irrigation well.
No, that is correct.
How long have they had that irrigation well, do you know?
You know, six years comes to mind, but I'm not sure if that was from him or from somebody else. I don't know for a fact, but six years comes to mind.
I mean, city irrigation, they were not drinking that. They were using it to water the lawn.
Right, for watering.
Okay, gotcha. And is ExxonMobil, aside from capping and closing access to it, is ExxonMobil pursuing any kind of remediation there, or is it expected just to dissipate over time to where it's no longer a problem? And what is that timeline?
That's a very good question. And again, we don't know what that timeline would be. It's the thought that over time, it will dissipate. But again, the statutes that we have to work with, our cleanup statutes, and I use cleanup loosely there, our cleanup statutes allow them to not necessarily address the plume through remediation, as long as it's defined. We know the extent of it. We know this is the area. It's not migrating, and that's been documented. They can choose to close that through an institutional control such as your ordinance.
So, the plume is not migrating. We've not seen it migrate it for the past several decades.
Correct.
It's not like the Dyson Plume and Arbor area that's been traversing. This has been static. We just, we are ExxonMobil, just had missed a portion of the area where the plume existed, and that's why we're adding these 52 parcels. Is that?
No, this is, this is, this basically, this 52 parcels encompasses the point of where we suspect the release occurred. So, this is the plume of contamination. Over time, it has remediated biologically. There's never been any active remediation out there. Sometimes you'll have, you know, pump and treat systems that go out there, or treatment, you know, some treatment systems. There's never a treatment system out here to address the groundwater contamination. This is one where it has just basically migrated, but we have a number, ExxonMobil installed a number of monitor wells out there to define the extent. And basically, it is a stagnant plume and has not migrated any further than the 52 parcels. And we have a buffer zone around that as well, just to ensure that we've, we're not going to miss anything.
Okay. So, will be continuing monitoring going forward?
No, we're not. All the monitoring, it's part of the closure process, all the monitoring wells are pulled, and this is where it finishes.
So, how, hmm, that's a little disconcerting. So, there's the prospect for the plume, I mean, even though it's been static, there's the prospect for the plume to shift, and we're not going to know it if it does, because we're not, Exxon's not monitoring it, and we're not monitoring it, and DEQ's not monitoring it?
Right. The plume, we've been monitoring the plume. Again, the release occurred back in 70, in the 70s, it's, which is, what is it, 40, 50, some years ago. And we've seen no change. Initially, when it happened, there was what was considered the free product, the actual floating product. That has dissipated. That was, you know, that has not been confirmed for a number, number of years. So, we've had the dissolve phase of contamination, and that has not, you know, that has basically, again, stayed stagnant for a number of years through monitoring that their consultant has performed.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, one more, maybe one more, hopefully one more follow-up question. So, in order for ExxonMobil to pull out their monitoring wells, and they need our sign-off to add these 52 parcels to our ordinance to prohibit wells, then they can pull up their monitoring wells and basically call it a day at that area. So, correct me if I'm wrong, legal counsel, we could say we would prefer ExxonMobil leave X number of monitoring wells in place for X amount of time and provide an update annually or every other year, or every five years, or whatever staff decides is appropriate and suitable. That could be done before we concur and agree to add these 52 parcels to our ordinance.
You could refer this back to staff for those types of discussions. Keep in mind, though, that the groundwater ordinance isn't designed, isn't, was not adopted relative to ExxonMobil. We have a number of sites around the city that are added to this map. If you want to rethink how we process those, by referring back to staff, given your comments and concerns, that would be fine, and we would do that.
If I could just clarify here, too. One of the points, Smith, is, as I was going to mention, that there are, this is not the first, the ordinance was actually passed back in 1997. I think the ordinance was amended in 2007. I think there's, am I close to 10? Maybe more, are already areas in the city that have restrictions in terms of use of groundwater. And it's more of a protection, too, from your aspect. But again, ExxonMobil, the reason that they pursue this institutional control and being added to this is because they want closure. And part of that closure process entails that they cannot leave any wells behind. So, that's one of our mandates, is that they cannot leave any monitoring wells behind. It's, if we felt that this was not protective, then we would not close the site, and we require the wells to stay in place. It wouldn't be closed. But we've come to the point where we feel that this is a protective enough institutional control to limit exposure. So, because of that, we are confident that, you know, again, we can step away and have those wells taken out, that the plume is not going to migrate. If we had any suspicion that it would, we would not have them take out the wells.
How long, as an aside, how long have you been with the DEQ, Ms. Johnson?
31 years.
31 years, okay.
Well, back then, it wasn't DEQ, but DNR.
Yeah, yeah. Long, long, long time, a lot of experience, okay. A lot of expertise there.
Commissioner Jeff.
Okay, okay. Just a question. Now, what is the depth of contaminants of the plumes? How deep is it?
I have about 10 of these going on at the same time, and I'm trying to remember offhand on this one. If I had a guess, I would say more than about 25. Okay, actually, I couldn't because I was out there for the last borings. Right in the area of 22 feet or so, I think is where they hit groundwater. So, yes, about 22 feet is my guess. 22, again, probably, the water tables are going to vary depending on season of year, how dry it's been. Between 2025 is probably good, but.
And in the radius of, on that, how large?
How large is this?
Yeah.
The plume is approximately, I would say, half mile. I'm trying to think how, we, our 52 parcels is, I would say, maybe a quarter, a mile, maybe a quarter mile for this one.
Wow, that's quite a large area.
I have a question.
Commissioner, reasons?
So, is the wells in the water are one thing, so there's no other impact, like if building a house or having a garden? I mean, none of those things. I'm trying to think of other impacts to the citizens in that 52 parcels life. I can't, I'm trying to think of something.
Right. And what we do, before we go for closure of a site, we have to assess all the routes of exposure, whether that's drug contact, is it going to hurt to touch the soil, vapor intrusion, is there vapors in the soil that's going to cause an impact, you know, in terms of negative, you know, for you breathing it. Is it going to impact a surface water body? All those are assessed, and we have to make sure that all of those are addressed prior to closure. In this instance, there are no soil, we actually went down, where we feel the break occurred, again, this is historical, but we went, we went back out there and we did soil borings. We had, actually, we had the consultant do soil borings and determine whether or not there was any existing soil contamination. We could not find any. Again, we went down, we hid it at, a little bit of a smear at the water table, but then we also had, they required them to put vapor, a vapor pin in the basement of the house right there and monitor it, and there was no indication of any contaminants in that as well. And there was no, because there is no soil, there's no drug contact either. Nothing on the surface is going to cause any impact.
Kathy?
I just wanted to mention, I actually was involved in putting this ordinance into place in the first place. And I think we were one of the first cities in Michigan. It was very innovative at the time, and the reason we put it into place is to protect our citizens. So, the protection here, and I agree with all the questions that you're asking, but the reason we wanted to do this is to protect the citizens that are in this area, because if they are using the well water, and they have a garden, as the commissioner mentioned, and they're using this water on their garden, and then they're eating the food from the garden, they are then getting the contamination. So, by doing this, that stops that. If you continued the monitoring without putting it into our ordinance, they could still continue to put wells in, I would imagine. We wouldn't have that enforcement measure. So, that's a plus by going this route.
And just a follow-up point, too. That basically having in the ordinance also just initiates kinds of conversations with the health department, because part of the ordinance is that this has to be provided to the health department, who permit the wells. And again, this is just, we're noticing that the residents, that, again, you are living in an area that has a contaminated groundwater plume going underneath you, don't use a well. So, again, it's a positive, just in terms of notification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, roll call.
Motion.
Motion.
I move.
I move to approve the ordinance amendment to add the additional 52 parcels to the existing groundwater ordinance.
Second.
It has been moved and second. Roll call.
Commissioner Rintz-Masipika?
Commissioner Rintz-Masipika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any public comment?
I actually wasn't going to say anything tonight, obviously.
So give me your name and address, please.
Jen Sonaki, 1417 Lake Shore Drive. I just, I just, I don't know, I showed up tonight, I wasn't going to, then I rushed down here, I'm glad I did, and I'm just up here to say thank you guys for moving forward on the resolution about the Kirksey property. Several you mentioned about the public outcry as of late, and it's nice to know that you guys are, you can hear that, and I just, I don't think you guys get enough credit for when you do listen, and you obviously listen, so I just wanted to get up here and say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. There's nothing else, I entertain a motion to... Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn, support.
Adjourn. All in favor?
Bye.